All right, welcome to the January 7th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. All commissioners are present, save for Commissioner Gonzalez, who is excused. We're here for the pre-meeting session. We're very low on attendance. Is Taylor gonna give us training today?
No training tonight, but at your next meeting you'll have some. Open in Public Meetings Act next time. Maybe I shouldn't say that because we need to have you here, so.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it now. Well, let's take a look at the agenda then. Any questions on business items? We could talk about who we'd like to appoint during this, can't we? Make it a little bit faster when the appointments actually come up. Let's start with the... That's what I told her would happen last time. Is anybody interested in being chair? You want to? Okay. That was easy. Do you have a preference on vice chair? Would anybody like to be vice chair? That was easy. All right. Design Review Committee, who has had an opportunity? It is.
Fourth, no, fourth Tuesday of every month here at 5:30 PM. Mayor likes them in person and only if there's something to discuss. So I'll generally try to let you know two weeks ahead of time if there's going to be one or not. So kind of keep it scheduled until you hear one way or the other.
Is anyone interested in the CDBG committee? Kind of a fun little thing?
Go ahead. I've done it several years.
Boy, I'm getting out of things. This is great.
I could probably give a little bit of context. I'm now actually Assistant Megan. Megan is the Chair of it, or the Coordinator, I guess is the position title. Yeah, so we receive about 500,000, give or take, dollars from the federal government through the community building that block grant program. And that's money that we need to spend on qualifying programs that, you know, increase... Yeah, to boost up people out of low-income, moderate-income situations. And so the way we do that, most of the time, most of the money gets spent by partnering with organizations, nonprofits. Usually they turn applications into us, we review those, and then we make awards to those programs essentially to provide those services. And it's a yearly thing.
Yeah, it's usually done by... Yeah, so I remember just meeting at the early of the year and then that was it, so.
We're gonna have fewer awardees this year as well. Last year we did like seven and we want to trim that down to like two or three to actually get more bang for our buck, so.
So the meetings are usually held during the day or late afternoon here? Yeah. Like around 3 to... 3 to 5? But I don't know if that's still gonna happen. It could be any day.
Unless it's on a Friday.
And then also, I don't, I didn't know if it was only for this year or if that committee is gonna be multiple years. I didn't know if you could answer that, or at least it's for this year.
I can do it because I can make it during the weekdays, so.
It's awesome. Thank you.
Oh, when she gets here, though, make sure you tell her that she's on the CBG, the design committee, and chair, and my chair.
Is she online right now? I know, so I was hoping that too. Yeah. Okay, on to the general items. Well, any questions on minutes? Okay, West Jordan Power Generation, is it Nava or Nova? Okay.
And so we're already working on the site plan. The site plan doesn't require to come to the Planning Commission. But part of the approval was when we got to the site plan, they had to dedicate some property along the road. It's about 3,000 square feet. And at that time, they decided we're actually just gonna split this lot off as well, create another lot. So that's what we're doing. Pretty easy, though, just a two-lot subdivision, then one zone.
This is one lot.
Should be two.
Under public hearings, one lot on 10.65 acres. It does. This must be an old version. Okay, two lots. Questions on Nova? Okay, Apollo Burger?
Not a question, but...
Oh, go ahead.
So I do have a conflict of interest on Nova. So they are a client of our firm, so I imagine I should just recuse on that decision?
Yeah, so you've made the required disclosure, so you've met the statutory requirement of the Ethics Act. If you wanted, you could recuse yourself on that issue by leaving the room, not participating at all, but that's not required. That's, that's up to you as to what you'd want to do, so.
So is that something I should restate when we bring it up in the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, at a minimum, that's what I'd recommend, is you just restate what you just said now in the open meeting. Once that agenda item is identified and then you've met the statutory requirement, so.
Okay, great. And Apollo Burger. So Taylor, you've got the big lift this time around, don't you?
I've got everything, yeah. Apollo Burger, they're currently just operating here across the street. It's a fairly old location. So they're going to be tearing down an existing building just a little farther north on Redwood and reconstructing that building for a new Apollo Burger.
Questions? That's what I've heard. All right, last one. Taylor, Wasatch Electric Rezone.
Yeah, this is a rezone and a master development plan for a rezone to the southwest quadrant zone. And then at our next meeting, we'll actually have a site plan and a subdivision for you guys to look at as well. It's about 54 acres, just south of the new 90th South Extension. It's kind of out in the middle of nowhere. It's to facilitate the construction of the new Wasatch Electric Headquarters at the location. And then this will be the last southwest quadrant rezone, which we will be bringing you until they bring in a full southwest quadrant rezone. The only reason we are entertaining this is because it's an economic development priority and we needed to get it done quicker than the rest of the rezone could be done.
All right. Yeah, I think we close the, the pre-meeting and we are adjourned until the general meeting at 6 o'clock. 20 minutes, huh? Go down to the lectern and sounds good. So I've lived in West Jordan for 25 years now. I live over by Jordan Landing. Where Bangor and 78th kind of, kind of intersect there. Married, six kids, two oldest are either on a mission or just got back. My oldest is at the U going to school now. I got a kid at every level, so I've got an elementary right now and a junior high or middle school and a high school at West Jordan High, so. So we're staying busy with all that. Don't have one in preschool anymore. Not anymore. We did that. We did that, so yeah. I'm also on the school community councils for the school, so Oker and Joel P are our two schools. And that's been great, you know, it's been a lot of fun. I'm an attorney by trade. I have been doing that for a little over 20 years, primarily bankruptcy and real estate work. So this is, that's kind of why I got into this, because it just, I enjoy, I enjoy real estate work and so this is fun to do. So that's a little bit about me, you know? Oh, yeah. Yeah, born and raised here, born in Taylorsville, went to Taylorsville High. Lived there until we moved out to South Jordan for a little bit in my senior year, so I just stayed at Taylorsville and didn't go to Bingham. And then I went to, I went to Westminster for my undergrad and then I went to the U for law school. So yeah, I've been here, except for a couple of years in Italy, I've been here. Rome and Naples were our big, our big hubs. So I was about nine months in Rome and about four months kind of in the Naples area. And then I was about six months in the island of Sardinia, so that's kind of the lesser-known island for Italy. Everybody knows Sicily, but there's an even more beautiful island of Sardinia and they have pink sand beaches. I mean, they are amazing, so it is, it is in Italy. Yeah, 48. Where does that put me? Younger than you. Sorry, what'd you say, John? Okay. Yeah, I was 96, 96 to 98 were my years. Yeah, so he would have, we would not have crossed paths. Yeah, before I got there. Yeah. Nope, we did not cross, but... So I went back after it was open, so we went back in 2019. And so we were able to go and do a session there, but we did not go for the open house. We actually just got back for our second time in October of '24. We did a cruise and it started from Rome and ended back at Rome, so that was pretty cool. But 2025 is a year to skip because it's Jubilee. And so, man, the entire country is just under construction, getting everything ready for all the different things that the Pope's gonna do and whatnot, so yeah, the Catholic Jubilee year. But '26 is gonna be an awesome time to visit because everything's gonna be done and all prepped and primed and beautiful, so. And everybody's gone home. Everybody's gone home, but right now, like, the entire city of Rome is under scaffolding, so it is not a fun time to be there, but... It is if you're into scaffolding, yeah, yeah, so if you're a builder, you know, go check that out. Well, thank you, appreciate that. So I'm gonna have to make sure that I remember everybody's name. And the problem is, is your names are all facing away from me, so. Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't help a lot, so, but I can see everybody's first name from here, so that's good. I know the mayor because I interviewed with him. Yeah, yeah, but no, yeah, no prior affiliation with the mayor. You did? Yeah. Years ago, years ago, I, it just popped up like as an emailer. I can't remember if I was just on the city's website or maybe it was in the city email that comes out, right? So it's probably in there that said that they're looking for some volunteers and I think Planning Commission was one. And there were a few other things that they were looking for volunteers. So I decided, okay, you know, why not, let's do it. So I applied for the Planning Commission and did not get selected. But apparently they do keep your resume on file because it came around again and I did not apply again, but I just got a message out of the blue saying, hey, we want you to come in, so, yeah, that's how it worked. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so that's how I got here. Glad to be here.
And, and you could always adjourn your pre-meeting and, oh, you did, but the microphone is the issue, got it? As long as the word republic is in it, that's perfectly fine. Democratic Republic, Constitutional Republic, but not just democracy, so.
That wasn't very loud. This isn't, is this working? There we go, okay. Welcome to the January 7th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting of West Jordan City. All commissioners are present, save Commissioner Gonzalez, who is excused. We'll begin today's meeting with a pledge of allegiance courtesy of Commissioner Thomas. We'll begin today's meeting with a pledge of allegiance, courtesy of Commissioner Thomas.
Please stand up, face the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and be seated.
Thank you, Jay. We now have the oath of office for new and reappointed Commissioners. We get to turn some time over.
Sasan, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. We're gonna do Commissioner Thomas first. Come on over here. I'll have you stand around this side. And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of West Jordan.
The laws and ordinances of the City of West Jordan.
And that I'll discharge the duties.
That I'll discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I'll have you sign right here. Next, we're gonna do James Anderson. Yes, please. And I'll have you stand right there. And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the City of West Jordan.
Of the City of West Jordan.
And that I'll discharge the duties.
That I'll discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. I'll have you sign. Thanks, Chair. I'll turn the time over to Mayor Burton for a minute.
I want to thank all of you for what you do, the service you provide for our city as a planning commissioners. And you know, one of them aren't here anymore, which is, it was an honorable relief for him from that position. He didn't do anything wrong. I just felt it was time to make a change, and sometimes I do that. So if there's something doing wrong, I will talk to you about it. But you guys haven't done anything wrong, so I haven't talked to you about it. So thank you for what you do. And sometimes we make changes, and I think it's good to make changes, and we will do that again. And the time will come when some of you will, well, eventually all of you will stop serving. But I'm glad you're here serving right now. So keep the good work. I love the variety we have on our planning commissioners. And if you look at where you live, you'll see there's a variety of the different locations we have. I like that, too. And if you look at your talents that you have, we have a variety of different talents. So I like that as well. And sometimes at planning commission meetings, people get riled up, and there's a storm. And I'm glad we have a firefighter to help put those fires out when that happens. Okay, maybe not. But so, so thank you for your service. And we've got some great things that have happened in West Jordan the last few years, and some super things coming up this year. And some of those are on your agenda for today, so I'm looking forward to great things continuing in the city. So thanks for your help in making it happen.
Thanks, Mayor. We like you, too. All right, let's step through these one item at a time, just to make it easy for the minute taking. So business item number three, election of Chair and Vice Chair. Do we have a motion?
I would like to nominate Jay Thomas, Commissioner Thomas.
Commissioner Hollingsworth?
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hatch, a second from Commissioner Hollingsworth, for Jay Thomas as Chair. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, motion for Vice Chair, Commissioner Thomas.
I'll make a motion that Trish Hatch will be the Vice Chair.
Commissioner Roberts?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Thomas, a second from Commissioner Roberts, to appoint Commissioner Hatch as the Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This is where I wish I could step up and we could just trade places, but I know I've gotta sit here for the rest of the meeting. Okay, business item number four, appointment of two Commissioners to the Design Review Committee for twenty twenty five. Do we have a motion? Do, and does anybody remember who we talked about?
Yeah, I think I was voluntold.
All right, Commissioner Anderson, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, a motion to appoint myself and Commissioner Roberts.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Hatch?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion of Commissioner Anderson, a second from Commissioner Hatch, to appoint Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Roberts to the Design Review Committee for twenty twenty five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number five, appointment of one Commissioner to serve on the CDBG Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Hollingsworth. Hollingsworth, I was gonna say Hollingshead, I knew that was wrong. Hollingsworth.
Commissioner Roberts?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hatch, a second from Commissioner Roberts, to place Commissioner Hollingsworth on the CDBG Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. That'll be a fun one. All right, and finally, looking for discussion or a motion to approve the minutes from December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, Commissioner Thomas?
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Commissioner Hatch?
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Thomas, a second from Commissioner Hatch, to approve the minutes from December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That was more talking than I have done in a long time for a meeting. All right, public hearing, the final action by the Planning Commission. We're on to agenda item number seven with Nova West Jordan Power Generation at sixty-five twenty-four West Old Bingham Highway for a major subdivision, two lots on approximately twenty-seven point six-five acres. M-one zone, Jacob Pults Chandler Swenson, the applicant, and Taylor Jensen for the city. If we could have the applicant step forward and present your application. If you would state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Chandler Swenson with Nova Data Centers. I have to apologize, I have not done one of these for West Jordan for a while, and your format is a little different as everybody's is. So I was expecting staff to make a presentation first, but I'll try to cover all the bases. It was in the staff report. Essentially, if you're familiar with Nova, we're a data center operating in West Jordan, and five other states in the west. Basically, we've expanded our campus over time. We now have three data center buildings, which are the frontage lots, which abut Wells Park Road. On our flagpole piece, which is between Wells Park Road and Old Bingham Highway, you can see we've got that lot. We plan to put a fourth data center building on that in the future. But for right now, we are creating a subdivision and splitting it into two lots. The first lot that we are developing is for power generation, so similar to the diesel generators that are next to the existing data center buildings. But instead of having them next to the building to be more efficient with construction and materials and everything else, they are centralized into this one spot on the campus and further away from the residential areas. So as far away as we could get from them without going too far from our substation that's internal to the campus, which is where all the power goes out to the data center. So that's the reason for our application. I think if you look at the staff report, you'll see that this is as following the letter of city code. And I don't really have anything else to add.
Thank you. We like to keep people on their toes. A little bit here and there, right? We'll go out of order.
You guys are so fast. I thought I'd have a couple minutes while you were going through the procedural stuff, but you moved right through it. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Anderson?
I don't have any questions for the applicant, but I do need to identify a potential conflict of interest. So Nova is a client of my law firm.
Thank you.
Sorry, which law firm?
Clyde Snow and Sessions.
Okay.
Trent Low.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
All right, well, thank you. We'll call you back up if there's any further questions for you.
Thank you all.
Taylor?
All right, thank you. I guess you're still Chair for this meeting? Chandler went over most of everything that I had to talk about. This is in the M-one zone. Actually, the only reason we are looking at it at this body, because we don't normally bring subdivisions in the M-one zone to you, is because there's about thirty-five hundred square feet of property that's being dedicated to us for that road expansion. Otherwise, you would never even have heard of this. Next steps after tonight, they will need to get a final plot approval that will be a staff level approval, and preliminary and final site plan approvals for both of those sites. And unless there's a roll-up door facing the public right-of-way, those will be staff level approvals as well. We are recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions which you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Hatch?
I just have a random question on water usage. Is this the data center that uses water or one that we approved, like we approved previously, that doesn't?
Well, right now, we're actually, this is power generation, so it wouldn't be the data center. But I believe all of the data centers that we've approved since I have been here have been the ones that don't use water. I think that's what Nova specializes in.
All right, no questions. So this has been noticed. Thank you. I was gonna say advertised. I knew that wasn't the right word. It's been noticed as a public hearing, and so we will now open this up to the public. If you have any questions, sorry, questions. If you have any comments regarding this particular application, feel free to come forward. You'll have three minutes. I ask that you state your name for the record. If you're online, press star nine to raise your hand.
I do see somebody online, but there is not a hand raised.
All right, hearing no comments, we will close the public hearing and bring this back to the Planning Commission for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Hatch?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission approve a preliminary major subdivision for Nova West Jordan Power Generation, a two-lot industrial subdivision located on approximately two-seven point six-five acres at six-five-two-four West Old Bingham Highway.
Commissioner Hollingsworth?
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion of Commissioner Hatch, a second of Commissioner Hollingsworth. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Anderson, did you abstain?
Yes, I abstained.
All right. Good for the record?
All right.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number eight, also a public hearing, the final action by the Planning Commission for Apollo Burger, seventy-one thirty-four South Redwood Road, a preliminary site plan and conditional use permit for an SC-two zone. Tracy Stocking, the applicant, Taylor Jensen again hitting for the city. If we can have the applicant come forward, please state your name for the record and present your application.
I am Tracy Stocking, architect for Apollo Burger. Do you want me to present? Do you want me to just answer questions?
A quick presentation about what you're asking for. I have slides in here so I can put them there as you talk.
Yeah. So basically, this is, so Apollo Burger has an existing location a little farther south on Redwood Road. You've probably seen it. That building's kind of becoming obsolete, and Apollo Burger's in kind of an expansion mode and designing building, new buildings with kind of a fresh look. And so the idea is to replace the current Apollo Burger with this new building. And we've been working closely with Taylor and staff to meet all the requirements. I don't think we're looking for any kind of special favors or exemptions. We're just following the letter, the zoning ordinance and other regulations. These are pictures of a nearly identical building that was just built in Saratoga Springs. And the new, the West Jordan site will look a lot like this. So we're replacing a kind of one-story, I think it was a former US bank, maybe, or a bank with a drive-through. So similar drive-through scenario. It's kind of a strange parcel. It's located in the middle of a parking lot of a shopping center, but it is a separate parcel of ground. And so, yeah, we've been working with a few months, or with Taylor and his group for a few months. And I think we meet all the requirements. We've got one or two more items to check. I think we have to record an easement for a water meter that's a little bit outside of the public right-of-way, a little bit inside our property. So I think that's about all we've got left to do as far as checking boxes. So yeah, parking's, you know, we're well within the parking ordinance. We've worked carefully on ingress egress, vehicular traffic. It's a little tricky because our egress location is getting kind of close to Redwood Road. You can kind of see it on the bottom of that site plan, but I think we're, I think we're good, so.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Just trying to locate exactly where this is. So there's that US Bank building there, but I don't think it's that building that you're taking down, right? It's the next one to the south?
I honestly don't know. I think it was most recently just an office, a generic office use.
Just an office use.
But it does have an old drive-through. And I just assumed it was the US Bank, but maybe someone said it's near the US Bank, and I made a bad assumption there.
Yeah, the building just south of the US Bank, okay. And then are you demolishing that building and building a new one?
Yep, that gets demolished completely. Yep. So everything's brand new, new parking, new landscaping, everything, yep.
Thanks.
All right, we'll ask you if we have any further questions later.
Thanks.
Taylor?
Great, thank you, Chair, Commission. This is a site plan and a conditional use permit. The reason for the conditional use permit is that drive-through component. The main thing we look at for our drive-throughs is to make sure they have enough stacking. So our code does require six stacking stalls. They exceed that with seven. Also, based on the size of the building, we require thirty-two parking spaces, and they have thirty-nine, so they exceed that as well. So they're well-meaning parking. One thing this building does, the previous building doesn't, that it's replacing, is it actually moves closer to Redwood Road, which we like to see. Get those buildings up as close to the right-of-way as we can and have more parking to the side and rear. So this will be an improvement. It's also a much more modern and attractive-looking building, in my opinion, than what's currently there. We did take this to the Design Review Committee, and they seem to agree. Received a recommendation of approval with no negative comments there. This meets for future land use plan as it's commercial, and current zoning would allow for that as well. So this is well in line with what the current zoning and the future general plan calls for. So just a little bit of the at-a-glance, it's just under an acre. They meet our parking. And next steps will be a final site plan, which would be a staff level approval, and then they need to get a building permit. We're recommending approval of both motions, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Taylor. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Hollingsworth?
Yes, so looking at the site plan, the exit there for the drive-through seems to be rather close to the entrance to the parking lot. Is that gonna be a problem?
Yeah, that's a good question. We did have our traffic engineer look at it. This isn't the first site we looked at. We had to move stuff a little bit, but we're comfortable with how it's set up at this point. But we did have to make some tweaks to be set up in a way that our traffic engineer was comfortable with.
Okay, so that could potentially back up the queue into the drive-through. There's a conflict possibly of traffic coming into that parking lot, causing that queue to back up, so.
So we don't have concerns with that causing like a backup that's going to go through the parking lot. Apollo Burger doesn't seem to have the queues that you would see at like a Chick-fil-A, and then the rest of that shopping center. It's an extreme pond and a harbor freight. So it's not like the traffic that we would consider a concern about the conflict point here at this location.
All right, thank you.
All right, this has been motion, or, uh, noticed as a public hearing. Uh, and so if you're here to speak on this agenda item, feel free to step forward, if you're online, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and we'll call on you. Just raise your hand. All right, hearing none, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and bring this item back to the Commission for further discussion or a motion. Commissioner Roberts?
I will go ahead and make the two motions, should I make them separately or together?
Separately.
Okay, um, I move that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit for Restaurant Fast Food General for Apollo Burger on approximately 0.92 acres at 7134 South Redwood Road, subject to all conditions and requirements of approval.
Commissioner Hollingsworth?
I second that.
A motion from Commissioner Roberts, a second from Commissioner Hollingsworth, further discussion on the motion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Roberts?
All right, I'll make that second motion, I move that the Planning Commission approve a preliminary site plan for Apollo Burger located at 7134 South Redwood Road, subject to all requirements of approval.
Commissioner Hollingsworth?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Roberts, a second from Commissioner Hollingsworth, further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for staying in West Jordan. All right, final item of the evening is a public hearing with the Planning Commission recommendation and final action by the City Council. It's for the Wasatch Electric at 9,000 South 600 West, master development plan and agreement and rezone. Uh, Ben Sestran, Gardner Group, C-Strand, sorry. Uh, the applicant, and of course Taylor taking this one again for the city, but please, step forward and, uh, present your application.
Excellent, thank you, good evening Commissioners, really happy to be here tonight, um, it's tough to follow Apollo Burger at 6:00 PM though, made me a little hungry. We, uh, so, just a little intro to this project, we're, we're really thrilled, um, to be bringing this to you tonight, it's been a lot of work, a lot of work from staff and our team, um, it really started a few years ago when we were able to get, um, funding and build 90th South, and this is kind of a, us being able to win this deal um, was because 90th South was under construction, and now that we have that connection, um, it's spurred development and, and growth here, and so this rezone, the, the catalyst for it was, um, uh, Wasatch Electric, which is a group that they're relocating their headquarters. Uh, really amazing company to be, we're taking them from Salt Lake, they're coming to West Jordan. Um, it's, they'll have about 500 employees total that will work out of this office, they, they won't be, every employee won't be there every single day, but um, that's how many we'll call this, um, office their home and their headquarters. The credit to staff, I mean, traditionally, what, we have, as you know, out here, a lot of vacant land, and it's kind of open farmland, and it takes a vision. One thing we, when we started working out here over four years ago with Mike Jones, his family, the landowner, and the city was we wanted to create a vision and a, and a master plan, and, and not just create kind of a, a patchwork quilt of development that doesn't tie together, and so the reason you're seeing a rezone for 55 acres, which is larger than just the Wasatch Electric site, was we were able to take that, kind of the concept plan and the vision behind the southwest quadrant, and incorporate that into, okay, how does this development going to impact the future development around it? And so that's, um, you can see in that, the concept plan there, I mean, obviously, there's a lot more detail in the Wasatch Electric headquarters themselves, but what you have in the, in, in the land around that, the reason it's not right up against 90th South is because we preserved that land for the vision of the overall area of having more retail mixed-use buffering up against 90th South. So that's, that's why you're seeing the application at, in its form here today. We're really, like I said, we're, we're thrilled to be doing another project here in West Jordan, and, and I'm happy to, um, answer any questions or, um, provide any more insight, if you have any.
Questions for the applicant? All right, we'll bring you back up if anything comes up.
Thank you.
Taylor?
All right, thank you so much, um, so moving forward just a little bit, uh, on the site, our future land use designation for this is southwest quadrant, so everything you see in pink there is southwest quadrant. Uh, that green which goes through it, that's typically open space, that's just the, um, the wash that goes through there, and so that will be either maintained or piped uh, to handle that storm drainage as we site planned for the site. The current zoning on the site, there are several different zones, we have a SC2, we have a low-density, single-family, and a, um, multi-family zone, those are both in our west-side planning, which we actually don't use anymore, so we need to replace those regardless, as well as some PF, which, uh, we don't have any plans for public facilities in that location, so going to a southwest quadrant zone meets the general plan, helps us clear up some, uh, old zones, which we don't use anymore, and, uh, kind of, uh, move towards the future. The southwest quadrant mixed-use zone is an interesting zone, as it has subzones within it, so it's a little bit hard to see in here, but these two areas up here at the top, those are what is called the commu, uh, sub-zone within the southwest quadrant. That's just the zone that, uh, is more retail and residential-based, and then the rest of the site would be the HTME, which is more for the high-tech and industrial, so that's what we're seeing, the Wasatch Electric, uh, site going into. In the concept plan previously, you saw future residential here, uh, and retail here, these are the two pods, which are those commu. Uh, we are planning, uh, a total of 117 dwelling units max in the, uh, lower commu location, and this one, which is designated for retail, have uh, up to 47 dwelling units, which would cap out this Wasatch Electric, uh, site at a total of 164 dwelling units, now this would be something we'll have to look at as we plat these and site plan them, we do want to allow density to be changed between those two if we need to, but with a overall cap of 164 units and no pod can have more than 120, or sorry, no more than 20 dwelling units per acre, so they couldn't shrink it down and put all the residential on five acres and do it, you know, at 40 units per acre, that wouldn't be allowed, so, um, this will allow them flexibility to kind of come up with that plan and bring that back, and we'll see that some point in the future. Uh, next steps for this project is, uh, there'll be a public hearing and, uh, approvals of a rezone, MDA and master development plan at City Council. They will then need to come back for a preliminary subdivision plat and preliminary site plan at Planning Commission, assuming those are approved. Uh, then we have a final subdivision and final site plan at staff level, and then building permits. As I mentioned, this is an economic development priority, so we're moving fast, we've already, uh, kind of anticipated that, uh, site plan and preliminary plat coming back at your next meeting, not next meeting, at the February 4th meeting, uh, which will be hopefully right after the rezone gets approved, but we can't look at those until we have the actual zoning in place. Uh, staff is recommending approval of both these motions, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a, a comment, that previous slide is awesome, and you know, I've noticed you've done it on a couple of the other presentations today. I really like this, where it summarizes what we're looking at now, and then what's moving forward, not just for us, but for any public that are curious about, so keep this up.
Thank you.
You've probably been doing it all year, and it's the first time I'm noticing.
I, I would actually like to take credit for it, the council office requires this for anything going to City Council, so I've just incorporated it to the Planning Commission as well, because I think it is good, but I'm not the brainchild.
Thank you for bringing it to us. In any case, uh, so we have two, uh, um, motions, of course, still a, a public hearing, but any questions for staff, Commissioner Thomas?
Just one, and this is probably maybe a little ahead of the road, but on the preliminary site plan and stuff, on the multi-family dwellings and stuff, is that gonna be like one structure? Or is it gonna be several, or is it kind of not determined right now?
Yeah, we actually have no idea.
Okay.
I talked to Ben actually a little bit earlier this afternoon, and I, we told him, hey, we need to get a little less detail on this concept plan, because we don't know where those roads are going to go either, and we don't want to put that out there, so they actually have updated that with just the pod, and they'll say future residential and density, but we didn't want to do a, a fourth, you know, last-minute change to the Planning Commission, I think we were cited something through, so that's why we kept it the same, but.
Okay, and that's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to, to make sure, like I says, I know I'm kind of a little ahead of myself here, but anyway, thank you.
Always ahead of the game.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, so on the concept plan, um, the future retail buildings, were you saying that they would also be able to put residential like on top of those, like a three-tier building? The future retail buildings, did you say that they could also include residential, like on top of them?
So that pod would be flex-use, so they could have retail and residential that, if that's in the same building, or if it's, uh, horizontal separation, either would be allowed.
Okay, okay.
It also doesn't have to have residential, so they could potentially just do straight retail and no residential units in that location as well.
Okay, but then 164 units may be able to be spread onto this other? If there's enough space?
If there's enough space, but then no pod that has residential can have more than 20 dwelling units per acre, so uh, as it's currently drawn, this could only have 117, so they'd actually have to make that pod bigger if they wanted more residential units there.
Okay, and then I was curious about the very last, um, requirement, no further piecemeal rezones will be considered, what, what is, why is that?
Uh, because the southwest quadrant zone really wants to master plan the whole southwest quadrant. Gardner and their partners are in control of nearly 900 acres of unbuilt land out here, and this is the second one we've looked at, about 50 to 60 acres. And the zone is kind of drafted to look at the full 900 acres, so we just want the next iteration to come in with uh, that larger, and that's why there's the subzones, which allow more flexibility, so, um, to kind of piece together where those different subzones would be, and then we'll have individual site plans and subdivisions to go into the detail on what we'll put in each of those pods.
Okay, so that is not a, a limitation of just this specific project, we're saying we don't want to have any more piecemeal rezones for the entire 900 acres, come back with your 850 plan next time.
Exactly, which they're working on right now, we should see that probably very shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Before Commissioner Thomas jumps in, uh, when we get closer to that, I would love to have a training on the southwest quadrant leading up, maybe the meeting prior to this. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
And this kind of goes back to the master agreement plan? That corresponds with the entire Jones Ranch, correct? Or is that just pieced for this one little section?
Yeah, so the master development plan and agreement that we are doing is for this 54.35 acres only, it's, uh, largely uh, formatted off of the Jones Landing North Master Development Plan, which is for this area down here.
That's kind of what I was getting at, is it, it corresponds with the Jones?
We use that as a template.
Okay, okay, then answered that question then, thank you.
Great, any other questions? Okay, this has been noticed as a public hearing, the time is now open to the public, if you have any questions, if you're online, raise your hand. And seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission for further discussion or a motion, or two motions separately. Commissioner Hollingsworth?
I'll make the motion, I move that the Planning Commission make a recommendation of approval, positive recommendation, to the City Council for the Wasatch Electric Master Development Agreement slash Plan, subject to the requirements of approval.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Hollingsworth, a second from Commissioner Thomas, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Hollingsworth?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval, positive recommendation of the Wasatch Electric rezone of 54.35 acres from Community Shopping Center, SC dash two, medium-density, multifamily residential west-side planning FMR, low-density, single-family residential west-side planning LSF R, and Public Facilities P dash F to southwest quadrant mixed-use SQ, SWQ dash MU, subject to the requirements of approval.
Commissioner Thomas?
Second that motion.
Okay, we have another motion from Commissioner Hollingsworth, a second from Commissioner Thomas, discussion on the motion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's exciting, first, uh, step in a much, much larger plan, thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Since this will be probably my last official, uh, motion to adjourn, at least for this next year, I make a motion that we adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you.